Call this meeting to order and we will get started with the pledge of allegiance. Welcome, everybody. It sounds like we've got an exciting program out there. And we will be hearing from them soon. But I think we're going to start with board bravos and updates, and there's a lot to celebrate.
Yeah, plenty going on, right? Santa House was as fast as Saturday. Another success. It was, I think, busy as all get out up there, so that was good.
Got a chance to see the high school play pubs on Saturday. That was really funny, and the kids did a great job, so bravo to them and everybody behind the scenes.
And obviously, today is Veterans Day, so thank you to our veterans out there. And then also saw that there was a lot of great things happening in the schools where students were recognizing veterans and their families and in their community, and celebrating that, so that was, that was great to see. A number of successes, and we'll probably hand off to you, Mr. Robinson, so we can, you have more of the specifics and details, because we want to honor the students that have been competing and winning since the last month. One, I will say, since last time, people were leaving the meeting to go to the girls' soccer game. They were regional champions, and our boys' team was regional runner-up. So, great job kind of shutting down some of the fall sports. I know we're still in the process with some of those, too, but lots of other great things that you're going to tell us about.
Yeah, and there's no way that I could highlight them all. We'll be here for quite some time, but there are some that kind of jump out at us. I don't know if I see Ms. Bolpenheim back there?
She's outside right here. Alyssa, they're talking about you.
No, Ms. Bolpenheim. Not yet, not yet. Not yet, Ms. Davis. Well, we'd like to celebrate Erica Bolpenheim. She was just recently named the Principal of the Year by the Kentucky Science Teachers Association for some of the work that she's been doing with the middle school science program on developing inquiry, so quite an honor there. Also, we're off to a really great start with our archery program and our speech team. Just had an incredible showing at the Beechwood Invitational. I think we had three grand champions and...
Four.
Four. We added another one there at the, that's right, we did add that late one. And then fourth out of 17 teams, so a really great start to a growing program. Also, our archery team had a really, a really great start as well.
Half of the top 10, right? Isn't that what they have?
Yeah.
They did, they did.
Boys and girls, they were a lot of that, top 10 on both sides.
10 of the top 10. And they're really top 20, because you had 10 for the girls and 10 for the boys. The volleyball team was district champions. We also had Skyler Frye and Adeline Armstrong, who were recognized for honorable mention at the National Journalism Educator Association. So this is a national recognition that happened over the weekend. Also, congratulations to our band, who were the Class A grand champions for our region. So it included Ohio, the MSBA included Ohio and Indiana teams as well. Quite an accomplishment, and I believe we'll probably see them next month. But I believe that's the top performance we've had in our band's history, so we're really excited about that. Let's see, what else I had here?
Freshman football beat Cub CAF for the second year in a row to win the championship.
That never gets old.
That doesn't get old.
It doesn't get old. That's worth repeating, for sure. Also, want to, from an update side, encourage people to come for our holiday walk throughout the community on December 1st. We will have school representation for sure at the Highlands Campus, but also at the central office. We'll have some student groups that are doing a variety of things. We also are starting to get into that holiday season, so this is the time where we go and celebrate a variety of concerts and performances. And the last thing I have on my list, I'd like to offer congratulations to our chair, Ms. Julie Kuhnhein, and our new, soon-to-be board member, Noah Gibson, for being elected to our school board for the next four years. Your service is greatly appreciated, and we can't do the things in this community without a willingness of people to say thank you, say yes. Thank you very much.
All right, so I think we are ready. We mentioned Veterans Day programming and amazing programming. I think we're going to be hearing from Johnson about their Veterans Day project-based learning that has a lot of student leadership involved, which we love to hear about, so please, tell us.
So, my name is Mrs. Davis, and I brought a little entourage of fifth graders. Who better to present about our project than the people who led the project? So we're going to start with allowing them to introduce themselves, and then Ally will pick up the presentation, and I'll take my place on the sideline.
Hello, my name is Leo Smith.
Hello, my name is Coisee Connor.
Hello, my name is Abigail Sand.
Hello, my name is Everly Labor.
Hello, my name is Cameron Carlson.
Hello, my name is Madinka Locker.
Hello, my name is Aubrey Stewart.
Hello, my name is Cali Carlson. And we at Johnson love to celebrate the veterans who served our country. So each year, Ms. Davis challenges the fifth graders with the driving question, "How can we honor and share the stories of our veterans?"
For our idea this year, we designed a boot camp obstacle course similar to the ones our veterans complete for basic training. We felt that it was important to identify the challenges our veterans face. We also felt that it would be fun and engaging for the whole school, making them active participants.
This wasn't helpful, but we didn't give up even when we struggled. We originally planned to have the National Guard bring their own obstacle course, but they weren't available, so we had to design our own. This took hard work and dedication.
We wanted to honor the veterans that risked their lives for us by incorporating different activities for the students of Johnson to experience.
Our group projects for this year included a boot camp that students completed today, a presentation honoring our personal veterans, and a branches documentary, so all students can learn about veterancy for our country.
We had friends and information about veterans and our fifth grade families. The last part is that fifth graders went around the school, taking photos of students and teachers, saying why they love our veterans.
The coolest part about this process is that we fifth graders did this all by ourselves, including this project.
We even had to apply for jobs. We sent emails, reminders, and also posted stuff on Dojo.
We hope that you liked our idea, and we hope you enjoy the veterans' project every year.
Thank you.
Wow. I've, as someone who's had some kiddos go through Johnson, I've seen this project, but this seems even bigger and better. You may be topping yourself, making it difficult. You guys did a great job. And I see Mrs. Davis was working on some speech things and even had you guys memorize. That was amazing. And I saw those pictures when I went and voted. I was looking at those, because that's where I voted Johnson, so that was super cool, too. Wow. So what was your favorite part? Because there were so many parts that were involved with this. What was some, and I had your mom, so I'm going to say, I want to hear from you, Aubrey.
My favorite part about this was probably designing the obstacle course and doing it and completing it, because it's, like I said, it was, it's fun and engaging for the entire school. Instead of just sitting and listening to a bunch of facts about veterans, they actually got to do what veterans do for our country.
You guys do, we have one of these every meeting, and you guys presented very well. I mean, each one of you speak with a lot of confidence. That was a very good job. You're in this whole room, so that's tough to do. Well done. It looks like you're ready for boot camp now, too, I guess, right? What did you guys, I mean, what did you learn? This happens every year, and so now you're in fifth grade. You've been through Johnson how many times? And you, you know, each year of the Veterans Day program, but what'd you learn this year, maybe, that you hadn't in the past? Something new.
It's like how hard it actually is to get into the, like, what branch you want. For the Army, they had to do like a five-mile run in like 13 minutes or something insane. And I was like, there's absolutely no way that's possible. So that was really hard, and I was very surprised by it.
And you guys got, had to lead all this this year, too. How was that experience different than the past? Because you were developing it and carrying it out, and you said applying for your positions and doing all those things. What's it like to be a fifth-grade leader?
In my opinion, being a fifth-grade leader means having more responsibility over the other students of our school and being a good role model. And it differs from the other years that I've been at Johnson, because the other years, I've just been listening to a presentation, but today I actually got to speak in front of our whole school, which I thought was amazing and spectacular. And I thought we even learned more than maybe others did in previous years, because we were actually coming up with the facts and, like, coming up with the projects.
Cali was also our concealer today.
Did you guys have any challenges putting together a program like this with so many people involved? Not necessarily what the veterans had to do, but how you guys put it together.
So it's kind of difficult, because like what Gemma said, we originally planned for someone to come in and give us something, but they weren't available, so we had to make our own. We had to design it, and then we had to go through this whole process that started, I'm pretty sure, back in October. So we spent a lot of time and a lot of dedication to this project.
And were you going to add something in that red and white structure? Yeah. Leadership's not easy, right?
We, everyone had to go around, and we had to take like 400 pictures of, like, it was like, it took so long. And everyone had to make sure they wrote everything, and it was really hard to get everyone to commit, and it was pretty fun.
What grade level pictures did you do, Kim?
Oh, yeah. Kindergarten through, or through 4th grade, for sure.
But what grade did you, what group did you specifically have?
I think my, I had, I was doing a Navy group.
Oh, you were the Navy?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure our class had 2nd and 3rd grade.
It's hard to get people to, but it's good, because everybody can include it, but it takes a lot of work to include everybody, right?
So a couple of things I would like to say to you guys. First of all, congratulations. What a, what a great project and what a really fantastic presentation. I'm really excited about, about how you're leading Johnson and as you move through the district. I particularly like the enthusiasm from this group. Something as simple as saying, "I get to talk to my, to my peers in a big group assembly," is something that not everybody says. And so bottling up that enthusiasm and really being excited about sharing what you know and what the work that you've done is a, it's an attitudinal thing that's going to go a really long way with you guys. You were very poised. You were confident. Your presentation is really nice. But I was so interested in your presentation of it that I really didn't even look at it a whole lot, because you guys were so engaging. It's a really, really nice job. And even the enthusiasm in the hallway is contagious, so keep that, bottle that up. I really enjoyed that. And most of all, the fact that you focused your attention on showing gratitude to people who are serving our country and that you've been reflective on the deep service that, that some of our men and women in this country say yes to, to protect our freedoms and safety, and that you recognize that. And you can see it in the hallways at Johnson through the photos that you've demonstrated. So thank you for your presentation, and thank you for this project. Really great job.
We have a gift. We'll give all these to Mrs. Davis. They're labeled with her names, but you'll get a T-shirt for doing your presentation and sharing with us. Thank you.
And we're going to take a couple of photos.
Yeah, turn around real quick so I can get that in the background. Turn and face me. Jordan, ready? While they're taking their picture, Zach Wells asked me today, and he said, "Why do you think it's important to give them leadership roles and so much responsibility?" And as they're all doing the thing in the gym, he said, "They're in control. This is our future." I feel really, really good about my future. So when I get to that nursing home here, it'll be wonderful. So, and I feel really great about that.
All right, look at me for a moment. Let's get a photo here. Ms. Davis, you want to get in the picture, please?
Only if you get my eye, right?
All right, and then parents, I don't know if you have one final picture. Turn to your parents, please, if they want to take any.
Why don't you ask Frankie Lai to turn around a little bit? Cam, we're going to say "for us." All right, guys, you can.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, community forum, and we have no speakers, so we can move right into the action items. So first up, we will be hearing from Mr. Wissman, and he'll be telling us about the athletic complex at Tower Park and giving us some project updates.
Well, as we discussed last week in the working meeting, things are going very well. You know, we're in that portion of the project where they have received to go ahead and start working on an area where the building is going to be. We've passed all those settlement tests. They have been actively working on the storm and sanitary sewers in that area. They continue to spend a lot of time getting the retaining walls finished. That will form bits and pieces of the perimeter of the facility. They are moving earth in to get to that final subgrade for the field, and about halfway through, a settlement test over by one of the retaining walls. So far, good news on that. Two weeks in, no major movement. So, you know, we continue to get all that, for lack of a better term, underground infrastructure done so that we can get to the point where people will start to see something besides retaining walls built up.
Got to have a strong foundation, so that's a big part. And it seems like the, there's more movement ability to move from neighborhood.
Yeah, that road, the road was complete to the point where we could move the fencing and create that pedestrian corridor primarily for walking and bicycles. It's not wide enough for vehicles at this point from the neighborhood to the park. That was actually done the day prior to purchase of music, so it's been there a few months. When I've been around there early in the morning or later in the day, it is being used quite a bit. Just good, that's why we have to.
So thank you for that update. And then we do have some action items in terms of, starting with the Blacktop.
So Phase 1, this is pay application number six. After this, there's an amount left of about $140,000, I believe, off the top of my head. So this is not the final payment. They're close to the point, they have actually received their punch list to start working on final bits and pieces and make sure all of their work is done. Preparation of the number seven final payment is starting to work and closing this project out. So we're very near the end on this piece.
All right, and I'm also realizing it's just going to be an exchange of, yeah, sorry, I was home with COVID last time, so I missed this exciting three-person, yeah, so I guess you guys haven't worked out. So with the statements by Mr. Wissman, I recommend a motion, or I put forth a motion to approve the pay application number six to Reglar Blacktop in the amount of $221,564.70 for the Highlands Athletic Complex at Tower Park project. We need to put the, like...
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion. Do I hear a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, so tell us about our next pay application.
Next is the pay application number four to Morel Construction. It's 663,430.50. So it's a little lower than the last time, which our memory service was just over $8. You'll see them fluctuate up and down as we go throughout the project. There was a lot of, you know, there was a lot, not just work, but there's also a lot of material that's been ordered and started to show up on-site, including the first significant amount of building-related steel.
And we'll see large numbers, because this is a project we want to do the right way and make sure it's, you know, the best it can be.
And it's a good, you know, it's a project that's going to be compressed into a shorter amount of time than a project that you normally might expect in this amount of time.
So spreading that out versus we're compressing.
They will be a little more compressed.
Yep, get it running so we can get our athletes and get our community served. So with that, I put forth the motion of approval of pay application number four to Morel Construction Company in the amount of $663,430.50 for the Highlands Athletic Complex at Tower Park project.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, I think that...
That's all for me.
That is all on my list, so thank you very much. All right, next up in our discussion items, we're going to hear from Ms. Flaherty for Summer Enrichment and then Burghantz Screener.
Hello, good evening. For my first report for Summer Enrichment, I believe it's just one, there it is, one slide. It's a little delayed, but it's intentional, as we do want to include all the efforts that our counseling staff at the high school have for their, for preparation of our students for college applications and working with them in the summer. So we do want to collect the data and share with you the representation of the classes that we offered in the summer. These ranged from explorations outside at the elementary levels to possibly art and sculpting at the high school. So quite a large variety. We offered 24 classes. 384 students participated. It's the first year we did not cancel any classes. So typically, if we have a threshold of approximately four or five students, we'll continue to hold, rather than only having one or two, so we had enough interest for all of them, which was great to see. So overall, we like to present to you the financials so that you can see this is not a for-profit opportunity for us. We are simply working with actually Ms. Ashley Winburne to help us calculate and create a budget. She did a great job. We have a net of $106. After all is said and done. And then further at the bottom, you can see the trends over time. And we knew that prior to COVID, we were in a good place. We actually had opportunities in the community that were being offered within, so we're definitely aspiring to be back there. We're moving in that direction with the 384 added for this year. Any questions?
How many teachers did that require?
I don't have that data here, but it isn't necessarily 24 different teachers.
Yeah.
We have some teachers that offer multiple different sessions. So each one of those sessions or each one of those different topics is considered a class. I can make that for you.
If that continues to grow like you want it to, is that going to be a, is that going to be a concern, or are we...
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and, you know, looking at summer fatigue and wanting to be off was a trend, right, at COVID? And it was nice to see this year that we had more of an application interest, that so they're turning them in. We're talking about it. We're refining the process early on before we even send that out. So I have seen more interest this year. Prior years after COVID, it was not the case. So we're hoping the trend is going to stay that way.
And, I mean, too, that's something that community as well. I mean, there are multiple ways people could, how people could be involved if they have the passion, experience, expertise that they could, that they think would be able to share.
Absolutely. I mean, in years past, we've had the opportunity to have an master photographer or someone with guitar lessons. Whatever we would be able to have and look at the cost, we have a set rate for pay, so we would stick to that. But if someone wants to come in and offer for our students, we'd absolutely hit them and find a place for them.
Really nice job with you and Emily. I know that this number, the participation number, really kind of gets back to on the high end of average over the last 15 years, if you look at it that way. So kudos, because we were trending in another way, so it's good to see. I know that you asked some of the questions about what would be accessible and interesting to students, so thank you.
Yes, I mean, a different way to sign up this year, too. We went through PR portal. So there are a couple of different things that were newer that we considered, and it looked to be a success. And we're happy to see that.
All right, so next topic is talking about kindergarten screening with the Burghantz screener, which is the kindergarten reading.
Yes, at the state level, each year, we are required 15 days prior to then 30 days after the first day of school to screen all of our students with a norm reference screener. And in our case, we sit one-on-one and administer this with the students with either the psychologist or aides or the teachers at each of the buildings to collect the data. And so for this year, you can see that we administered three sections. Parents took the opportunity to answer questions, and we compiled together to get a complete screening from this as well. We, as we screen, we are listening for possible referrals for speech, or if there were decent issues with hearing that we may suspect, we make sure that we would then make those referrals to appropriate personnel so that they could be screened. We also, at Burghantz, have five areas that we're looking at. And these are the same. Every year, this screener has not changed, and there's not a diversion. This is the same one we've been giving for multiple years. The self-help and the social-emotional are the two that the parents complete. So on the previous slide, I had mentioned two of the sections, the last two. And then for our current year results, we screened 190 students. There are two categories that represent ready. So you have just the ready, which is blue, 55.7% for 106. And then you want to add the 44 ready with enrichments, which would be the green section, 23.1%. The ready with enrichments are your top core targets, so that will show you that you will possibly look for them for primary council referrals or other enrichments within the classroom. And then it also indicated at the beginning of the school year that at that moment, 40 students were not ready, which made up 21% of the population. That also is shown here where you can take, and again, I lumped the two ready categories together, so you can see overall, that would be 79% ready and 21% not ready. You can see the trend data over time. Last year, we were up just a tad bit, but we were exactly in the same spot in 2022. It kind of fluctuates, but we usually are close to right around 87, was a great year in 2021. But regardless, the teachers take this information. They use that for diagnostic to begin the instruction if they haven't already. You know, maybe 15 or 20 days within the school year that we started. They take this in addition to their lists and their formatives that they have in the classroom to adjust instruction and make sure that they are continuing to hit all the milestones within the classroom that's age-appropriate and developmental. So this is extremely important for us to review. This does then get reported out at the state level, so that each... the state level so that each school district will then be reporting as kindergarten-ready in this data. This would be the representation.
And obviously, that's, you know, something parents, family members can work on, the type of skills that are assessed and help prepare and make sure, you know, they're supporting their students prior to kindergarten. And I think we at times have done some, some things to share that information. But if they look into that, they can find those things as well. So.
Yes. Typically, at parent conferences, which we just had, we're the first quarter report card used with a company. And then the conversation can be had with the students, parents, especially when you have the forty that would be those that need an extra little support. What are we doing to make sure that they are, are excelling?
And even prior to starting kindergarten, like to practice and and have students ready to, ready just in general, and obviously to perform at ready.
And you said this is a, this is a requirement that we have, correct?
It is.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's great, though. You got the parents, you know, doing the part portion of it, and everybody kind of on the same page right from the get-go. So.
Yes. And absolutely no student is exempted from this. So even if you have a student that would have significant cognitive delays, their information's in this information as well. We need to take the opportunity to make sure that we use this support.
Our involvement in Imagination Library and, and supporting literacy and being read to in preschool programs, our targeted preschool programming, the, the work that they do in our district's supportive preschool program is really to get them kindergarten-ready. And then also you see a lot of private preschools that are doing some very similar things. So this is an indication of, of how our students come to us. We are, we are at the very high end of, of our region and state on, on students that come to us ready for, for school. But it, it does give us a good data point.
Right. I mean, once again, testament to the community, to the families and what they're doing day in and day out with these students. So it's a great starting place then to build upon. We talked about foundations with the Tower Park Project, but also foundations here. Exactly. All right. Thank you. If there's no other question. All right. Let's hear then kind of the continuation of that kindergarten readiness about state accountability from Mr. Faust.
Good evening, Allison. Thanks for having me. So tonight, I'm going to report out on our KSA data. And so this is the Kentucky Summit of Assessment that was done last spring. So just to recap, these are our student grades, three through eight take these assessments, and our 10th graders and 11th graders take these assessments. So it's our student population who are assessed in this. And so tonight, I'm really excited to share out with you briefly just some of the successes that we had. And there are lots of the, lots of highlights to celebrate when we look at our student growth and our student success. Again, just another data point, just as Jamie shared out on the Burghand data, this is another data point that our school leaders and teachers look at to kind of help determine measures of our school effectiveness. And so happy to share this out with you tonight. And you'll see that there's a lot of good news to share. So just a real cap, real quick recap, I want to summarize our three elementary schools I'm going to have you for you. You know, there are different ratings, which I've coded up there at the top. You see the Fort Thomas Elementary Schools, we have the highest level possible on the state's color coding system. It's blue. Two, three of our schools indicated we're at the blue level, with Woodville coming in at the green level with really high index scores. And if you're like, all right, what is that eighty-seven point seven or eighty-nine or seventy-two nine? What does that mean? Really what that is, that is a calculation of each individual student's novice apprentice proficient distinguished score. And so there's a calculation that is done. So when they run it through the math machine down in Frankfurt, it spits out those numbers. And that's really where I want to put my area of emphasis tonight. It's on that NADP, so novice apprentice proficient distinguished. That has been a constant for decades when we're looking at student accountability and school success. And so I'm going to put the focus there. Over time, the testing system has changed, the color ratings has changed, and how those are all metriced out. But one thing that has been the constant has been that percentage of proficiency. And so really want to highlight that tonight is a lot of our schools did a fantastic job. When we look at that, ninety-seven of seven hundred and seventeen schools earned a blue rating. For us, they have two of those schools in the rating that's really a testament to work that's being done by our students, teachers. And then a hundred and seventy-four, even that is a smaller number. I think that's twenty-four percent of our schools earned a green rating. And so for Woodville to come in a green, that really speaks to the high level of effectiveness there. Another thing that I want to point out to you when we look at status, that is looking at the percentage of proficiency. You're going to see tonight that all of our schools are at, are either at a very high rating or a high rating when we're looking at levels of proficiency. And so for us to attain that, again, is really a testament. And so, you know, irregardless of the color, when we look at that constant over time, we're talking about proficiency, for us to be at a very high and a high level is something to celebrate, I think, district-wide. So let's kind of look at each school. So Johnson Elementary, these are the areas of which our students are assessed. In reading and math, science, social studies, and combined writing, that's at various grade levels. So each of the three grade levels do reading and math assessments. And again, I just want to point out the high level of proficiency in those two, reading and math index areas. So seventy-eight percent of our students at Johnson came in at reading at proficiency level. So that's just a really, really, really strong number. Science, those are our fourth grade students, and that is just, I think, that speaks. We've had the Johnson students come up here and speak to all the work they're doing with the Green Club, the Green Club initiatives, the focus they're putting on there to have seventy-two percent of their students reach that proficiency level, particularly in fourth grade, is really, really strong and should be proud of their work. Additionally, I want to go down to social studies and combined writing. That's our fifth grade students. Again, really high proficiency scores there. For us to be at the sixteenth and seventeenth, that is really good work. And there you see the status level, again, very high and very high. So the way the state works that is they combine those disciplines in reading and math. They combine it to get an indicator score. They take those three content areas of science, social studies, and writing. They combine that to get you an indicator score. And then I also want to note there at the bottom, we have the Climate and Safety Survey. So it's a QSCS. That's a survey, that's a survey that our students in three through five take. And it speaks to, you know, how do they feel about, do they have a trusted adult in their school? Do they feel safe at their school? Is the work that is being asked that they're asked to do, do they find relevance in it? And so our students score out that. And you see our students scored that at the high level. So again, really high scores there for Johnson. Proud of their, proud of their work. Moving on to Moyer, you're going to see a similar theme here. Again, want to point out the status level of very high and two of those three disciplines with a high rating at the survey. So I think the work that Dr. Labor, who's gone, and Peter did there last year, that Pete and Kara are continuing this year, I think, really speaks to the work that they're doing. And I think they're going to continue to have high levels of proficiency. Want to point out one highlight here, that social studies index. Again, seventy-nine percent of the students reaching a level of proficiency. That's a fifth grade assessment. And so again, really, really good work for the students at Moyer. They received that designation of blue. So again, should be really proud of, of all of their efforts. Moving on to Woodville Elementary, they did receive a level of green. But again, I want to point out the status level is very high, very high for both the key academic areas. And then even the survey, a high level of high. They did run up against, they, when you had taken that change element, which I've not spoke of too much tonight, but that did bring their overall score down. And so when you kind of think about it, imagine scoring the best round of golf ever in your life and then going out and playing again, and then the expectation to shoot that same level. And that's, that's kind of what they fell up against. But, you know, I want to run, I just really want to point out the levels of proficiency and distinguished are still at a very high rates, with sixty-eight and sixty-two percent of our students scoring at the proficiency level. Many schools across the state would, would love to have those numbers. And so again, real proud of the work that John and Liz and their entire faculty are doing there. Again, just highlighting the status level of very high, like you just don't get to that status level without achieving at a high rate. So really proud of their work as well. Moving on to Highlands Middle School, want to point out, they did hit a blue distinction. Twenty-eight of three hundred and nineteen middle schools across the state earned that blue designation. So to be one of twenty-eight is great. And then they were eleventh middle school overall. And so that is, when you look at all the numbers and you run it through the math machine, they come up with an overall score of about eighty-four point five. Highlands Middle School had the highest rated score in the state. So really proud of the work of Erica, of opening the entire middle school staff down there. Again, their status levels are at the very high and high level in the content areas. I want to move over here. And so again, you look at the level of the indexes there. So when you're looking at proficiency, you see those high levels of sixty-seven and sixty-eight percent in reading and math index, really on par with their elementary counterparts. So starting to see some of that foundation, Kuhn High, the foundations that are being built at the elementary, they're continuing there at the middle school. And so really proud of that work. That writing index of seventy-five percent proficiency is also a really good number that we'd like to see our students coming through with. So again, kind of noting out that the total scores there are very high and high for Highlands Middle School. Again, great work. They do, they are putting an emphasis there in science. And so I believe that that number is going to trend up. When you look at science across the state, that is an area that I think we need to probably take a closer look at the assessment itself. And I know Middle School is taking a close look at science instruction, and they believe in the work that's being done there. Didn't necessarily yield a result on this assessment, but we believe in the work that's, that's being done there with the, they're actually a leader in Northern Kentucky on, on science instruction. So I feel like we're, we're in a good space there, irregardless of that number. And then finally, Highlands High School, they too had an overall rating of blue. And so, you know, Mr. Darnell and his team, just want to point out again, the status levels are very high and high across the board, which indicate the high levels of proficiency that we're seeing coming from the high school students. Only twenty-four of two hundred and twenty-eight high schools across the state earned that distinction of blue. And so again, that number is comprised by that ninety-eight point one, which comes kind of the overall number from your level of proficiency. They were the third-ranked high school in Kentucky. And so again, really proud of Highlands High School. When you look and rank order all the high schools across the state, you know, they kind of fell victim to that change number last year. This year, we were the, you know, their performance, they put a concerted effort on that reading and math specifically to kind of bring that, to bring that up. And their efforts really paid off. And so again, you see increases across the board, status level of very high. Want to highlight that seventy-six percent proficiency in reading. Should be really proud of that as a ten-degree assessment. And so the students really kind of focused in and did a good work, and their, and their staff really led them to those high results. And so super proud of the KSA results for Highlands. And then ultimately, what that led us to, we were blue at all three levels. So the elementary, middle, and high school levels, we earned the highest level of, of the color coding system that we could. So our schools and students did a fantastic job.
All right. Yeah. As we always say, blue, of course, is the best. And they're all there. A lot of great things, you know, to your point, the change in moving and continuing to improve on very high performance is a challenge. So that's one we're going to have to face. And we're working on multi-tiers of instruction in terms of supporting students and working through that. So good problem to have and a challenge I know you welcome and the building leaders and teachers and students do as well.
I think it's, I think it's good. I think that it's good when you can, you're kind of competing against yourself here and here. And so you are challenging, and there is a lot to be proud of, but it's also just sort of more data to make.
It is something to be celebrated, though. I mean, kudos to the whole, the whole staff at all the schools, really. It's impressive. You know, third high school in Kentucky and somebody's statue rattled off and ninety-one point three overall at high school is, is awesome. And, and some of these numbers for each of the elementary schools is just, is out there. I mean, it's really good job. And I do love that it's like, hey, all right, what are we low on at this school or that school? And how do we keep on getting better? I mean, but overall, amazing job. You do a good job breaking these numbers down, too. Even using golf analogy so we can understand.
So Clem, follow along. And I want to say, the middle school piece, I like a lot because you often do see that dip. You know, you see students climb, climb, climb in elementary, kind of that dip in performance. And then they, they get back to it in high school. And it looks like some things are, are really clicking away at the middle school because we're, we're not seeing that dip. It's maintaining, and that's great. So yes, say your prayers or good job.
I would just say, I applaud all of our building leaders. They're all taking really intentional instructional focus. And that really comes from the support of the board and not just brown-nosing here, but like the level of commitment that you, the financial commitment that you've made to our resource adoption, curriculum alignment, and the work that our teachers and staff have committed to, whether it's, you know, through working in PLCs, through getting trained, through digging in and doing curriculum alignment. Like, there's a lot of factors that are going into that that are paying dividends. And so that really wouldn't be done without your support. And so we really do appreciate that. Thank you.
A couple of things that we, that we do look at, and again, thanks Keith for, for the presentation, but also thank you for the leadership and making sure all those elements come together. Keith said a couple of things early on that, that we, that we do look at, irregardless of accountability systems. And that is student proficiency and above, and making sure that we maximize it. I'll caution, I'll caution some, some reviews. We can look at it in a three-year scope because it was only in the last three years that we defined what proficiency looks at at each of these. So if you look ten years in, in reverse, the language was still there, but, but where we, we establish cut scores from one accountability system to the next does shift and change. The other part that, that we, that we caution a little bit is that while we look at one group compared to the next group, they really are different groups in most of the settings, with some exceptions when you look at elementary and, and, and the, in the middle with, with reading and math. So, so I guess my point is, is that we have some comparables to, from class to class and proficiency and distinguished, what that looks like. But the one constant is, is where our current understanding of what students need to do to be successful at the next level, we have great intentionality. So I'll go with what all three of you said and called out, most, you know, most recently, kudos to our students, our teachers for their intentionality, for our, our building leadership and then in the families, really, to make sure that it all comes together. So really proud of, of all blue, all blue in the top in, in Northern Kentucky for sure. Nice work.
All right. So that takes us to committee updates. And I don't know if we've had any meetings since last time.
I don't think so.
Okay. Well.
It's only us three, too.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, I'm sure Jeff was attending all the committee updates. So, all right. And maybe we'll have that, more of that next time. Then that we move right along to the consent agenda, which all board members have had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about the items contained therein. So do I hear a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? So that, I do believe we are finished with our business. So at seven eighteen, same, we'll close. Thank you, guys.